We're ready to begin the work session.
Good afternoon.
Evening.
Three, two and a half hours late.
Right? So this is a work session on our transportation project. As you know, we were here in July and we were talking at that time that we have an issue with... If I can go ahead and get the presentation going. There we go. With connecting our community. We have too much time spent in cars setting at lights. We also have an issue with safety. And so as a part of an overall look, and it was really generated from a conversation Ford Pinellas had that said that we have some funding issues and we're coming upon a time where we have to make some decisions. So in July, I said that we would go out, I'd work in conjunction with Ford Pinellas and WIT, along with our staff, and we would gather information, gather input from the community, and bring back something to you. And that's what we're going to attempt to do today. This is an update. We're not looking for a decision at this point. Over the last, since July, we've made over 30 presentations. This has been to municipalities, to chambers, to business groups, both large groups in North County, Mid County, South County, to industry and organizations and others. As part of that, you know, input, we, one thing's been clear. Everybody agrees. We have a congestion problem and something needs to be done. The question is what and how to approach it. This problem hasn't gone away. There's been several news stories that is, you know, written talking about people, the time people spend in cars, it's time that they're not spent with their families, that it impacts their lives each and every day. What our residents said earlier this year as part of our own community survey is traffic is the number one issue that they face, and that's on their minds because it's something that they face every day. Again, back in July, we showed you these two funding slides. One is under our current scenario. This is for our Transportation Trust Fund. We are currently spending more than we're taking in, and that fund would go into negative in around fiscal year 2022. And PSTA is in the same boat. In about 2021, 2022, again, they go into a negative situation. So at that point, we either have to reduce level of service or increase revenue. When we looked at this, we started out by saying it's a larger issue than just a funding issue. It's really an integration issue about, we know that we have a transportation problem. We need to solve it. But we also look at how people get around. People use a wide variety of methods to get around, and it impacts how they access services. So we know we can go from point A to point B, and we have a road congestion issue. We also want to make sure that we get there safe and we don't have an accident, whether that's in your car, on a bicycle, walking as a pedestrian, in many of our intersections. But we also know that those same connections people use to access workforce and job training services. They access affordable housing and jobs in many of our areas. And then what we showed before is that we also know that we need to preserve our existing infrastructure. So we've tried to take an integrated approach and a balanced approach to addressing this issue. When we do that, it really breaks it down into three different areas: to reduce road congestion, to make our transportation corridors safer, and to enhance our transit services and those opportunities that that creates. So if we look at our road congestion issue, and you'll see the same slides that we used back in July, except you'll see a lot more on them. So in this first slide, you can see, when we look at improving our traffic light coordination along major corridors, our ATMs, we've done a great job with it. We've built out over 240 miles of that network. And this, the idea being is, when you start with a green in that corridor, you get greens if you, you time the lights. But we have over 110 miles more that needs to be done. I previously said that's at 60. When we start bringing in our municipal partners, and that's what's taken these several months, is for us to meet with our municipal partners, to get the same type of information and co-locate that down into a single spot. When we do that, there's a lot more that needs to be done to maximize the throughput on our existing infrastructure, one of the most cost-effective ways of addressing our congestion issue. We also note that we need to add turn lanes and intersection expansions. This is to reduce congestion at these choke points, and these are critical choke points. But there's 125 locations countywide where that needs to be done. So as we know, we're maintaining our existing infrastructure, and that's going in the red, but we really need to be doing more to expand these intersections to be able to move traffic and reduce congestion. We also know that technology's changing. There's a lot of newer technologies that we can incorporate even into that fiber network, things that adjust the time of the lights based upon the flow of the traffic. You know, you have different days, or an accident occurs, and that adjusts all the movements. And so there's a lot more that we can be incorporating in to make our congestion, or to reduce road congestion throughout the county. The next area that we wanted to touch on is in making our transportation corridor safer. Again, this is that same slide that you saw before, but a lot more on it. And this is when we start looking at all of our different areas. We have 140 countywide locations where we need to improve safety conditions. This is for pedestrians and motorists. We have sidewalk trails, sidewalks and trails that provide options for people, and this is, over 70 miles needs to be expanded to be able to make those connections. Street lighting, we've talked about before, the impact that street lighting has. Where we don't have streetlights, we have more nighttime crashes. And that simply makes our streets less safe. So we know there's so much more that we can do to make our transportation system safer for both our pedestrians and people in cars. And then finally, an enhanced transit services. When we were here in July, we really talked about the area that's highlighted in yellow and these three primary corridors. Now, there's nine countywide where you'd have these primary corridors. But as we started looking at that, we also know that as part of making a significant impact in our transportation system, that we need to look at some of these regional connections. And so when we looked at that, we started really looking at a few other routes that would provide great opportunities to make and enhance our transportation network. One would be a regional connection over to Tampa from St. Petersburg. The other is along Route 60 from the airport to the beach. And the, well, two others. One would be 19 North and also 580 between Dunedin and Osmar. Critical connections, they would be built out over time, but these are also areas that are prime targets for looking at enhanced transit services, either through, you know, just enhanced transit services, or more express, or other types of things that provide more predictable, predictability for people that want to use a transit as an option.
Barry, may I interrupt for just a moment, Madam Chair? Karen?
Yes.
Okay. When you say built out over time, those three major, what does that mean to you, over time?
So for instance, well, I would have to get PSTA and them in here, and certainly WIT is here, and WIT can certainly answer that in more, a more definitively.
I'm just curious about what that means.
Well, I think that any of these, if we start enhancing service, they're going to look at the level of service, the utilization, and then what is, what is the most important priority, second, third, and things like that? So it would take time to build out, to get the usage in that corridor. For instance, on the 580 corridor, for instance, between Dunedin and the mall, you have a lot of service. A lot of people use it. But it's not as used as much out to Osmar, probably because people don't use it much to get to work because it's not as predictable. That could change, though, because there's a lot of jobs out in Osmar that people could access. So I think that those types of things would need to be evaluated by PSTA, by Ford Pinellas, to be able to make the decisions on when those things would occur.
Just curious.
So really, what that brings us to from a regional programming cost? So we looked at it over a 10-year period. Under any scenario, this, obviously, we're going to be moving into using, if we enhanced revenue, we're going to be looking at using that for operating too, okay, for PSTA. So anything would have to be more long-term than a 10-year period, but not indefinite. So when we look at that, we start looking at, we start putting all these costs in on a regional basis. It comes up to, you know, just shy of $1 billion over a 10-year period. Now, this, though, is taking all the input that we receive from all the cities and then kind of really forcing it into a box of, these are regional projects. But there are other projects that are needed within the municipalities and stuff. So when we look at this, and we look at some of these corridors, we get that down into a, the $906 million. That does not include the enhanced transit services along those other routes. When we add, when we add those in, and we add in the stuff that we receive from the cities without looking at that, it puts us at $1.3 billion. So these are significant numbers, obviously. But again, we've, you saw the number of intersections, the number of corridors and things that need to be addressed. This is countywide, and it's a significant issue. So we've tried to capture all of the information. We've tried to collect that from the municipalities, look at these varying competing priorities, and we're still in the process of doing that. That's the reason we're not here today to ask for a decision, because we've learned a lot since July. But there's still more that needs to be done. We need to look at some different scenarios in terms of funding. For that very question, how would we build that out? Well, if we gave, if we had all this money tomorrow, obviously, we're not going to be able to build it all tomorrow. So how does the construction phase look? How would we build this out? When would we implement different things? And as we build that funding scenario out, that'll then help us, inform us as to what different funding options are viable at that time.
So I have another question, Madam Chair. The billion three that's referenced here on the bottom of this slide, Barry, is that including state and federal match dollars or no?
No, but it's including the full cost of the programs that we just outlined from before. We would be able to get some match dollars, we know, for some projects. But there's also more regional projects that we know are going to come up, that we would want to be able to use our transportation money to be able to fund. A lot of the times, if we get a lot of state dollars for some regional project, one of the things they're going to require is a state match.
Local match.
Okay? That local match. Except I don't know what that is, because they're not here yet. And so we want to have money available to be able to provide the local match, to bring those regional connections to us. So we certainly don't want to project out and spend every single dollar and not be able to maximize, you know, state and federal dollars for those, for those programs. But no, so we haven't included those in, but we also know we would get some grants for some of the things that are capitalized in here. So back when we were talking about this in July, we said we really come up with three different options. One, we could certainly look at a local option fuel tax. As you know, it's currently split 60% county, 40% city. We have an additional five cents that we could levy, and that, but that would produce about 174 million, about $17 million a year. We have the transportation sales tax. That a half cent produces just over $1 billion over a 10-year period, and a one cent, obviously, double that. And then finally, you have ad valorem taxes. The general fund could, you could increase the mileage for that. PSTA cannot without a change in state law.
Madam Chair? On the transportation sales surcer tax, what kind of limitations do we have from the state as far as what those monies can be expended for?
This portion, this, this sales tax would be levied under the same statute that we levy the penny under. However, it's a different subsection that allows different uses, different increments in which you can levy it. But specifically, I suspect getting at your question, the vast majority of things that Barry has already described as far as potential projects that we may put the funding to would, maintenance and operation would be allowed.
Okay. Thank you.
Barry, on that same question, have you figured out roughly a percentage that we're talking about for maintenance and operations of that monies that you've just estimated? Are we, are we helping our own funds and the city's funds on that?
Well, I've got a couple of slides that's going to kind of be kind of forward-looking, but you can see the operating cost. If I go back a few slides, a lot of the capital, but the O&M comes to about $33 million a year under the enhanced program. That's, that's to pay the drivers and run the buses and everything like that. Plus, there's some maintenance, obviously, with the infrastructure. So if we, if we look at these different funding options, one, we do look at the five cents. If we divided that up, simply split it between the city and the county under the current scenario, that does take us out a few years in terms of keeping the Transportation Trust Fund healthy, but it does nothing to address the lack of funding for PSTA. Or we could come up with a, we decided, okay, what about a third, a third, and a third as a funding option? Well, it kicks the can down the road from a Transportation Trust Fund issue with us maintaining our roads, but PSTA, because of the, they're so heavily intent on day-to-day operations, they're in the negative the first year, even in 2022. So it does nothing to address their, their funding issue under, under this current revenue source. That's one of the things that we wanted to look at. So, you know, we've looked at the real, and we also look at the ad valorem. And the ad valorem, obviously, it goes, it goes straight to your property taxes. It's doesn't pay by visitor. So we really look at transportation being the more palatable of all the different revenue source options that we have. We have a half cent that talks about the funding, we said. One cent, it really does address the issue, and I've got a couple of slides that will show you that in a second. But it's also one-third paid by visitors. And as you know, they're contributing to our transportation issue, and so they're helping to pay for the solutions associated with that. We also are able utilizing this to provide stability to the existing programs and address both our capital and our operating. We do have the ability to borrow against this if we want to look at different scenarios where we could borrow, get some of the capital projects, you know, upfront, and then pay that out over time. But it does require voter approval. And I just kind of spoke to the, to the ad valorem taxes. I thought I had, I thought I'd missed a slide. But again, we think this is, this is certainly a viable option, but it, it would require a significant mileage increase. And again, we believe that it, it's not as supported as a sales tax because of the impact that visitors help to pay for that. Now, when we looked at, how do we, how would we roll something like this out? And again, we have a lot of work to do, especially in terms of how we do financing, how we do the programming to this. But we've also just floated a few different ideas in terms of how to address some of the varying competing issues. So under any scenario, the Board of Commissioners needs to be the final authority. Obviously, you're elected countywide, and so, in fact, any scenario has, that a plan would come to you. One of the ways, though, that we thought to address a little bit of this is, one, we have to take a piece, and we have to give that like we would with the gas tax. So municipalities can maintain their roads, we can maintain our roads and our rights away and all those various things from an operating standpoint. So we're proposing, as again, as a concept, to take a percentage off the top. If we took a percentage off the top and we split that out by lane miles with our municipalities, then that would be a way for them to address their needs, us, the county, to address our needs. And then the other would, would come from a recommendation from Ford Pinellas in an annual plan. That annual plan can both look at the countywide traffic and safety issues, along with PSTA's annual, annual plan. That was where we'd come in for them, saying, okay, first I want to do this, and next this, and how do we want to do differently? Because now that we have a little bit more, right now, they've been kind of just trying to hold it together and be able to maintain a minimum level of service. This would give them an opportunity to look at things differently. And that could come to a Ford Pinellas for them to look. They already have to complete the comprehensive plan, and so this, this way, they can really look at how this comes together, and they'd make a recommendation to you annually on, on that annual plan. And then that's how ultimately you would make the decision regarding funding. Again, we're just floating a few concepts up. I've talked to WIT about it, and we've talked to some others, open to new ideas on this. But this is something that we want to discuss and kind of mature over the next month or And then finally, to kind of look at these different scenarios and how that plays out. So if we did a half-cent sales tax, that, that does address a number of issues. It stabilizes our, the county's existing program, our trust fund, until 2028. But it does give us the ability to leverage grants. It enables us to complete our program. There's enough sufficient funds within there. That's where we have to kind of play that out a little bit. But it's tight at a half cent, because there, we're trying to look at the impact that we'll need for addressing some of these regional issues. Now, if we do some borrowing on this early on, how much money does that free up? And so we want to play those scenarios out a little bit and see. Obviously, if we have double that, and then our, our trust fund's adequate out to 2044. So it's more than sufficient. It addresses all the transportation needs, both the basic and the enhanced, and doesn't, you know, create pressures on the financing of some of the various options that we've had. So again, we've tried to look at this. We've assumed a split of 25% for local municipalities, including us, and 75% to the regional programs. Any of these scenarios, obviously, you know, can work. The question is, we want to make sure that when we, when we start a program, however we want, is we want to be able to move traffic. We want to be able to reduce the congestion on our roads where people can move and get around and get home to their families. And we also want to make sure that we improve the safety of our roads and create transportation options for people in the future. So that's where we're at at this point. I'd be happy to take questions.
Question, comment?
Sure.
I guess on slide number 23, you know, when you look at that, it implies that we're going to have all this money left over. But I think if you look earlier at the half cent, or actually at the plan and the needs that we have, it's pretty, it's pretty much maintenance. So we're not talking about enhancements necessarily, aside from, you know, maybe better lights and better timed lights and stuff like that. We're not talking about expanding transit or any, necessarily. So I mean, if you, I wouldn't want us going around with that, saying we're going to have multi-billionous of dollars left over if we, because if we, if we, well, that's what it looks like, though. So I'd want us to sort of have a plan in our back pocket about what, how we would actually enhance the system if we had a full cent. You know, I mean, I mean, let's think a little bigger, because the needs are bigger than just maintenance.
There's no question, and there's, there's so many of these regional projects that are, that are several years out, but they're, but they're coming. And so it's very hard for me to put dollars to what our share would be.
Hard to project what our share would be.
But we know that those regional connections, from an economic development standpoint, along from just a livability standpoint, are vital to our region. So yes, I completely agree that we need to account for local match dollars for these larger regional projects. I just don't have them baked in because I don't have, I don't have, I don't have a dollar to put to them.
So the other question I have was on your charts. Are you just building in a recession every now and then? Is that, is that what that is?
We didn't, we didn't build it in. I'm not sure exactly the flow. I'd have to let Rahim answer.
It goes up and it goes down a little bit, and it goes up. Mini recession.
So we didn't build a recession in here. What we did was, we looked at like the feasibility of actually getting a project out for the information we knew.
Which is also hard to project, but.
Four, four years to plan for a major road, boom, you spend and.
But the revenues kind of go up and down, too. That's what I was wondering about.
That takes into account, like, the scaling on the graphs. They're not, the scaling from number 22 to number 23 doesn't match. So keep that in mind as you're looking at it.
But I was just looking at one of them, where it goes up and down.
Slide 22.
Can you come forward and identify?
Grant funding, yes. Krishna Gandhi with the Budget Office. And on slide 22, it includes some grant funding. We try to factor in, depending on the projects, which ones we would anticipate some grant funding. And then also on the PSTA, we found, figured a little bit of funding from the state.
Oh, okay. So it kind of corresponds with the size of the project.
Correct.
On the graph.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair? Matt just asked a follow-up on the graphs.
No, he sat down.
So yeah, back to 22, I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Okay.
I noticed, Madam Chair, this is gator blue and orange. I don't know how that happened on this graph.
I bet it has to do with O and B.
It's going to be burgundy and gold next time.
Or green and orange. Oh, yeah. So if this is a billion dollars over 10 years, the half-cent option?
Right.
Why am I not just seeing 100 million a year under the revenues? Why is it fluctuated?
That's what I, that was my question.
So, so the first year, basically, we're saying that we'd only collect from January to the end of the fiscal year, which would be 75%. And then each year, we're increasing the revenue growth by 2.5%. And so it's, we're anticipating sales tax revenue to increase, and that's why it's not straight.
So assuming this starts in '21, is that what we're assuming here? The revenues would start in '21? This is on slide 22.
Yes.
So we're saying that, I thought the penny generated 100 million a year. So why doesn't it start at that 100?
Because in the first year, we'd only be collecting for nine months. We would start collecting from January 1st and not from October 1st.
Got you. Okay. Okay. That explains it. Thank you.
Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, just back to one of the questions that Commissioner Gerard asked about bus service. The service, the enhanced transit service does include expanded services.
Correct.
A couple of corridors.
For the routes we were talking about?
Yeah.
A couple of routes. Two or three routes.
Well, I mean, I'd like a little more detail. I don't have to do it today, but I'd like more detail. Just a couple of routes doesn't do much for me, but I mean, if you're talking about, I'd like to know how that.
Remember, these are, these are, these are the primary routes, okay? There's feeder, there's feeder service that comes into these primary routes. So we really focused on the three, the three in yellow to beginning with, as kind of the high priority, where the numbers really play out. And it ties some of those regional connections to affordable housing, to job training, in support of the Ford Pinellas Plan. But, but the items in pink are areas that we want to pursue more and learn more about. We have cost associated with them within the figures, whether or not theirs are ripe in year one, year five, you know, or year seven is some, is part of that question. But those are important from a regional standpoint.
Okay. So the feeder routes, we're not doing anything different?
Well, there's, we build in cost. Well, there's, we built in cost associated with, okay, so, we say, okay, so, for instance, we know that today, PSTA needs additional revenue to maintain existing levels of service, okay? Well, when we built in the, even the areas in yellow, we also built in a cost of not only that, but the enhancements to the, to the feeder routes also, to those primary lines. So, there's, there's cost associated with enhanced levels of service for that.
And, okay. Operating primarily bus drivers.
That's correct. And buses.
And other, and other systems. I want to go back to slide number seven, where you talk, you have a, a six-sided figure here. And it seems like, I know it's been brought up before, where you're looking at all these different items as it relates to transportation.
Right.
And one that keeps being brought up by people, that's not included here, is defective tourism on our roads, as an ex, another block to be considered. It's workforce training is one of those blocks that we look at. But, tourism is a huge.
Yes.
Huge. I mean, we're talking, we're talking 15 million a year.
Yeah.
You divide by 12, you're like 1.25 million per month, and we know it's skewed, but on top of our million, that's a lot, you know? So, I think that needs to be incorporated into this. Seven-sided transportation.
I think that's a great one.
Septagon, or whatever they call it.
Add, add another, add another block.
That's a great specific transportation.
Well, whatever. Just take that into account when we're putting together our transportation, solving the problem of transportation. That's a big piece of this.
Especially on those routes going across the bridge.
Yeah, sure. And it might, it might, it might include the, you know, stuff from here to Clearwater Beach.
Yeah.
Well, and that's actually the reason that you see the 60 added back in there, because the importance of that.
Okay. And then, I, you know, there's, it's suspiciously light-colored is McMullen Booth Road.
Suspiciously light-colored.
So, so when I think about McMullen Booth Road and the Thea influence and thinking kind of like, what kind of solutions do we have for McMullen Booth Road? To me, that's something we're going to have to address. So, that's really very light gray, and so, we need to be looking at that. And you talked about the other cities.
And I put, I put up here, just on the road congestion issue, you can see the number of intersections and improvements associated with, along McMullen Booth, and pretty much every other route.
Yeah.
In the county. Significant.
The, the roads, those roads are heavily traveled with Pasco County residents going to work. And I'm presuming it's down in the Gateway area.
Hmm.
I mean, to me, I mean, I know this is simplistic, because it, you know, the details are always, they get in the way a lot. But, the details of having a place to park cars in North County, north-north, even in Pasco County, where they can get on a service that takes them straight down McMullen Booth to work.
Right.
And drops them off, has a circulator get them to work, and then, at the end, just bring them back, whether it's using the opposite, opposite side of the road, back and forth, you know, something that allows options for people that are going to work. That's what they're doing.
So, you're talking transit, sort of transit options?
Yeah, it's a transit. It could be transportation mix with using lanes on the opposite side of the, you know, all kinds of things like that are critically important. That's one of our big, big areas of consideration.
And that's also the reason that you see highlighted is the 19 North, and to look, to look at that.
And that's going to be.
But, that's, that's, it's the same concept. You have a lot of people coming and moving through the area, and it completely over, overpopulates our roads, and so, people are setting in, you know, congestion. And so, certainly, doing the intersections will make a big impact, but to the extent that we can incorporate transit into that option, and it's, and it's reliable, predictable, and fast service, because our buses are setting in the same, you know, traffic, then people will use it. Right now, they, they won't use it, because there's 17 stops in between there, and it takes too long. So, looking at enhanced transit to where PSTA can provide those types of options for people, well, then, I think you'll, you'll see a change in that, and it'll make a huge difference in our ability to move in the county. And that's part of this whole issue, which is looking at revenue options and what can, what kind of an impact can we have on our overall transportation system.
Yeah. Okay.
So, you know, I, again, we've, we've learned a lot over the next four months. What I'd ask is, over the next couple of months, we'll continue to meet with our municipal partners, with our area partners, and, and explore some of these different options. We'll, we'll come back to you after the first of the year with that, along with some funding scenarios. In other words, you know, if we build this out, what does that look like? And, and we'll play some scenarios that way to where we can come to a right decision, but an informed decision based upon everybody's input.
Commissioner Welch.
Thank you.
Commissioner Justice.
Great job, Barry, on this, you and your staff. On, on item 15, slide 15, I just have a general question, and you can get the details if you don't have them off the top of your head. But, I recall, the first time we had this slide, it was like 700 million. So, this is, because I remember asking you the 300 or so, would the cities be able to access that? So, what, what drove the increase up to 900 million? Was that a specific category, or was it across the board?
It's, it really is driven, so the difference between this one, 906, and 1.3 largely is the enhanced transit routes that I showed you in pink, but also on, taking into account what we receive from the municipalities. We only had data for county data from before. So, we could talk about a county intersection, that we need to do that. Well, and so, we went to St. Pete, for instance, okay? And St. Pete, they, they have information on their roads that are regional roads. And so, we looked at that, we went to Clearwater, we went to, you know, every single city and got that type of information. And the difference between the enhanced regional program cost and the basic, which is the two, is whether we skinny down the, the number of projects within that. We looked at, it may be a need, but maybe it's a local need versus a regional, you know, need. They're all important to the overall transportation system. It's whether we have resource constraints or not would be dependent on how we look at those projects.
And the difference between this 900 million and the 700 or so before is that we didn't have all the cities.
That's correct.
So, all the cities are reflected in the 900?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And when, the next level of conversation we have, whether it's a group or, or one-on-ones, will we have the election timelines for next year as far as who else is going out to referendum on anything, school board, or anybody else? And also, what our timeline is as far as the drop dead to get language on the ballot and all those, so that we can kind of backdate the prep of the language and all that, kind of the ballot language and all of that?
We have some of that information. I want to confirm it, but like with the school board and others, and so, yes, I'll, I'll make sure I have that at the next discussion.
And then, also, as far as other ways that we're gathering public input? Because so far, the people that are on board, a lot of them are folks who are just going to be receiving money, so of course, they're going to be on board with it, so.
Well, and, and just so, so we understand.
Without having to do anything, so.
So, we, we have, gave about 30 presentations to a lot, to a lot of different organizations, group. It really wasn't to get out necessarily to the public. We certainly took public input as part of this process. It was really talking about opinion leaders at the municipalities and the mayor's level to gather the type of input and options and stuff to where we could kind of put together a program for you to consider in terms of funding options. Obviously, if you decide to go forward, then obviously, we would, we would make, want to build that into our project and actually do, you know, conduct public information, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Yeah, just one last point, and you're starting to identify categories of costs for this regional program that we're talking about, road congestion, corridors. And that's in the projected penny. If we could just, a transportation penny, put alongside mutually exclusive use of our current penny.
Yes.
For infrastructure, so that, I think the messaging for our residents needs to be clear, that there is a distinct difference in what those dollars are being used for, so that we're not double-dipping on infrastructure.
We, we certainly can do that with the county projects, and that became one of the issues. Different, there was a different levels of information available when, when we were dealing with municipalities, and which, we had a very specific plan, and, and ours, so we can, I can assure you that there's nothing in here that was promised as part of our penny dollars. These, this is an enhanced level of service. But, I, I certainly can share that. I was trying to keep the presentation down.
That's fine. I think as we go forward, I think people, understanding that clear difference.
To your point, this is, this is not, this, everything that's, that was projected as part of penny four will be delivered as part of penny four. This is an enhanced level of service.
As you, as you kind of do addition three, or four, or five of this presentation, which I've used a couple of times, and not the updated one, but the old one. It'd be nice to have those pieces that, like Commissioner Justice asked for, the timeline and decisions. And we understand there's probably some surveying that's being done out there, and I think residents need to understand what is being said by themselves. So, I mean, those are pieces that we can start to bring to the table, I think, in future conversations.
Certainly can. My last thing is just a big thank you. Obviously, Whit and I have been out on this and gave this all over, but Rahim and OMB staff and, you know, Transportation and others, they've, they've all been playing a real, real critical part of, of saying what, what actually makes a difference. From a fiscal side, looking at how does this project out to constructibility and impact on our, on our residents? And so, we're looking for a solution that works. We're looking at reducing the congestion, safety of our roads here in Pinellas County. And so, we're wanting to bring you options that actually make a difference. And so, we're a lot further, we, along than we were in July, and after the holidays, we'll be in a better position to be able to have a more informed conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Quite great. All right. I think that is the end of our work session, but I would be remiss, because I meant to